Hello, local friends. Please join me. Join me, join me, join me. This is Odugu State, Odumegu State, the public government in homeland town hall meeting. Join me as we, you know, fellowship with them. As we, you know, whatever they are going to discuss, whatever they would say, they send them. And if there is any form of donation fundraising, please, I beg you, please do whatever you can. This is allow Odumegu, Odumegu State defacto government in homeland town hall meeting. You know, so I am joining them live. And in case, you know, you cannot join them live, please watch from this platform. Share it so that it can reach all other Odumegu state indigents. And then subscribe, subscribe. Because when you subscribe, you will have this meeting on your own channel. It will show on your own YouTube channel. And some of our people who are connected, who are subscribers to your own, will see it. And then so on, so on, so on. We will group this thing on and it will get to people who are supposed to see this. We need funds. Please join us. Because we are all here. They join them now. Let's join them now. So I am, they join them now on their own already. They join them. Thank you for watching. Thank you for joining me here. Okay. While they are sitting coming out, let's just say something.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, they are on.
You are welcome to. When we observe a minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra. The time starts. Many souls of our heroes and heroines, baby, women and children, and everyone that have paid the price of Biafra liberation and freedom, rest in peace. While we continue to fight on to see that we get total liberation and restoration of our motherland. Ishe, ishe, ishe. Welcome to Odumegu State. And we are here to see what Odumegu people have for the Biafran government. Honorable moderator, over to you, sir. You have been my attention. I'm muted, sir, but we can't hear you. Masie, sir.
Okay, sorry. I was just talking to myself. I attend number one, opening prayer by Ayolochukwu. Yes. Ayole. Yes, yes, yes. Ayole. Maybe having some difficulty. Adazion. Are you, you know, take over?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Ayolochukwu, okay.
I look on the... Yeah.
No, no.
When is, it's not more opening prayer by Moa?
Yes, oh, we must say, you send there again.
No.
Line was super silly, man, I'm on now. And what the here, so he takes his over.
Okay, I'm not aware, sir. Okay. Now, to Tomo, opening prayer. Bra, Chukwukikabiama. Eza nebe se arogo. Wakaka masi amasi. Dikendikere. Omowakobokogun obosi tata. Obosongwa June. Obosinkizizino ngwajun. Eba wondotunde, ba wonde. Odumegu state bokota. Wena namata, our acting prime minister. Nebana naino Odumegu state. Ezo nyongwa echineka, wena yogo. Nebana naino. Kozie menka ege me today. Kometamporo. Anyway, wena yogo. Keno epre, ndisiye, our leader maze Nandekano. Our prime minister, Simon Neba. Ezo nyongwa e, noyene febe nebefano na. Bahume, meko biye fike. Ah, ware ware omo Biafra niye. Omo omae, anje, wena hage naka. Anyongwa e chikuwa ha, bawa hume. Ware nayoko agbe. Keno nyene omo Biafra, ndine ebene donation. Ndine menka, hane, meniye muro ngwa. Anyongwa e wena yogo, wene kineki, no money shone ina omo Biafra. Yinda kana yosina, Chukwukikabapuri mehe niye. Ishe, ishe, ishe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my brother. And item number two is your prayer remark. Able state admin. Ma, you could see.
No, please, you should co-host, Ossisiya Mappi.
Yeah, co-hosting, it seems like, yeah, co-hosting before, it's like, you know, first off. Thank you, yeah, now he's back. Ma, Ossisiya Ma, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not hearing anything. Ma, Ossisiya Ma, are you?
State admin, state admin, where are you for your opening?
Yes, he is down there. But, uh, co-host him again.
Wait, network came out again. Wait, he will come back again. Okay, his network is really bad. Yeah, let's go to the next item before he returns. Before he returns, the network will be fine. Moderator, check your program and go to the next item.
Okay, next item is presentation of cola by Chukwudjoke, which is deputy admin Pakistan.
Then, I'm happy to talk to you. And then, I'm happy to... Later.
Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay. Because I am an Oba Ta, on behalf of Odumegu State, I am an Oba Ta, our APM, acting prime minister and his intarad, his cabinet. You got only one minute, when the mic is on, this is, this is my, this is my camera. Uh, hey, one minute. I want to turn my camera upside down, but I think it's not happening. Okay. Right. Okay, okay. Don't change my remote later. I put in a few words. I put in a few words.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh-huh. Hey, man, uh, you do, bro. They were all there.
Minister Jare, please co-host me on the other device.
Am I coming up to you? Yes, yes. Ta, yeah. On behalf of Odumegu State, I am not, wena Oba Ta, our APM, acting prime minister and his cabinet, uh, Buburuburu. Uh, are you, uh, O... Ya ba, uh, say do. You are telling me, we are work project. If only I could, they don't know what you make. Chukwukikabiama, ekke kero owa. Ona nubu, ogadiya na kibona na. Ojidididamwa, ona... Omo ge, Odumegu state, you don't know what you get. Wena Oba Ta, our APM and his intarad, cabinet. And omo nai, Buburuburu, omo Biafra. I don't know how you make it. Kaidu no botung keta. Oh, je, we had ya, pokugu, ndichia, our ancestors. Ya pasen keta. We are yoge amara, yoge budo, yoge honaya, yoge gamniru. Oh, je, kaidu no botung keta. Odumegu wena, anaba ta, omo nai. Wena asin aja, adere, omo Biafra niye, Buburuburu, ma. They were APM and his cabinet, ma. They don't care about us, no botung keta. Na kulu deju, wena, ya kaya, ma. Ekke kero owa, chindindu, na ndeje, da, yeme kene, no botung keta. Siwa chodje, gude, ndozi. Eza ina pokuru. Eza ina yogo, bobo na ma, denwa, or denwa ina pokugu, wene kineki, wena asin na. No botung keta, ta, keda ta ra yoji. Ya, ago zha ra yoji, no botung keta. Oh, je, agen, wetera eyo ma, wetera yu bo. Eh, honaya, na gamniru, ndichu omo Biafra niye na. Okacha cha, ndeje, no freedom, ayene je. Oh, no be. Odumegu state, kano, no botung keta. Kam... Keta. Amara. Ekke kero, wena asin, da, no botung keta. Wena apoku, ndeje, yene, yene, yu bo, kuchie gude. Omo anele na, nebo, omo ada. Ezo no, zindun na, nde mo, ro na ya, nde ro, bifaya, da, do, chindupos. In the fight of freedom, wena apoku, no botung keta. Wena asin, kuna da ta ra yoji. Kuna da ta ra yoji, no botung keta. Ekke kero owa, yeme kene je. Wena asin, agbe, kaya wetera no botung keta. Omo bo, yu bo, omo Biafra, siwa no botung keta. Odumegu na no botung keta, wena kuboku, ni siwa omo Biafra. Wena siwa, na moa wa, ikae na aso. Na moa ngwa, ai ge, no te na, dena dehanya. Abusuridam, yu te na, yu bo, owa, dena mo dekano. Wena yago, no botung keta, eze do. Gude, ndozi. Dengo, zha, buke, wa ta, owo, ruguoka. Oka na. Wena esu, na, na ta, no ringo, mbwe, mbwe, okuja, na ba, go, koya. No ringo, mbomo Biafra, ndichu, yemo ra owa. Eze debu, gade, ndozi, ina yago, no botung keta. Keda, yu bo, ruguoka, aburu, ntega, jo, na yego, na mo dekano. Oh, jo, na yeye, na dena dehanya. Oh, esu, ni shoro, ntega, wa ta. Oh, wa, omo, ruguoka, omo, alze, Simon, etawa, prime minister. Mo ketawa, nyemo, angena, kwe, eze bo, madu, o ga, dere, dena, moa. Ega, poka, ose, na, o dena dehanya, ayene, na giya, lo pa. Yoko wa, we are part of this journey. Niko, asin, asin, oye, ne, ruka ba, ne, je, yu kana, ha, we. Eze debu, gade, ndozi, ina yago, no botung keta. Ya, ba, yu me. Chokobemo Biafra niye, Buburuburu, ebo, ebo, bobo, no, you know. Wena apanbo, odesu, wada re Biafra, na, ma, kaya desu, yemo ra owa. Neri ga, bo, kaya ne, je, neri ga, di, bo, kaya, oye. Neri ga, bo, kaya, oye, neri ga, bo, kaya na.
Ishe.
Ah, ya na, no, nso, na, no, omo, chetata, bo, oye. Neri kaya, gena, oye, no botung keta. Wena esu. Ana, ma, yage, gade, gade, gade. Nande cabinet, ya, nde, nte na, bambo, our media, everybody, our APM, ayene, wetene, ni siwa no botung keta. Wena asin, da, chokobemo, ruguoka. Ozo, obo, na, ge, obo, ge, abo, kunda. Niye, dena, anu, bu, bu. Nande cabinet, ya, niye, na, ya, wo, wo, dam. Amame ye, wena, cha, hamwa, ikae, diye, duwa. Wena, wetoko, ikae, na, chok. O dena, adere, ya, ge, bu, bu. Ayu, nchari, ne, ga, na ta, na, na Biafra. Wega, fe, na, homa, diye, ra, yeye, wena, freedom, ma. Teta freedom, ya, dere, ya, na, asin, koka, biya. Nande, no, nanda. Ishe, 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 ishe. I hope I'm coming, I'm coming clear.
Ishe.
Ishe, ishe.
Very powerful, very powerful.
Oh, you can, na, wena.
Ishe, ishe.
Nekonha, zha, zha, apa, ni, sa.
Ah, omaka, omaka.
Oh, faraee, oh, faraee. Because I am a former Guchu de. Okay, okay. Pakistan admin. Uh, na, I am the Odumegu state. I am a G plus fifty agenda. Wena, we are all here. Nine hundred Odumegu state. Wega, the power, wena, asin, non. Omo Biafra niye, na, akata ta, our APM and his intarad, his cabinet. And my, I am a senior, no, on behalf of Odumegu state. Say no, what you make.
There was.
He is there, ba. I don't, I don't have my tab, maybe. There, no, what you make. Aga, barani, nchari, ne.
Aga, barani, ne.
Aga, barani.
There, there.
Very good, very, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think our state admin is in now. Maybe he can do the... Hey, Sunny.
State admin, ready.
Ossisiya Ma. We lost it, so we need to...
Sorry, I have an issue with my net. Um, sorry for that. Let me start afresh. Welcome address by SA, Odumegu State. Good evening, fellow Biafrans. Good evening, prince of Biafrance. Good evening, lips and admins. Good evening, acting prime minister, honorable Odechukun Kere. Good evening, all the host of Biafra Republic government in Aysai and Biafra defacto government in homeland. Let me start by appreciating our supreme leader, His Excellency, Massey Nandekano. He has done marvelously well in bringing us to right by making us to understand the need to exit the terrorist state called Nigeria. And to our prime minister, His Excellency, Massey Simon Eba. I say thank you for your sacrifices and for building upon the, upon that foundation which our supreme leader, Massey Nandekano, has laid down. The freedom of Biafra has been your ultimate pleasure, Ohamadike and Obatobiawan of Biafra. We pray to Chukwokike for you to regain your respective freedoms and for the actual restoration of the sovereignty and for the actual restoration of the Biafra sovereignty. Ishe. Our CLC Sherman, honorable Emma Madabum. Thank you for your effort and commitment to the Biafra liberation through your hard office. To our APM, honorable Odechukun Kere, we are grateful because you have really become our bishop and evangelist as well in the absence of our supreme leader, Massey Nandekano and our prime minister, Massey Simon Eba. You are building and pursuing the total freedom of Biafra people in the same steps and foundation laid down by our leader and prime minister. It is with great joy and honor that the good people of Odumegu State welcomes you all to this memorable town hall meeting. This is our first town hall meeting with APM, honorable Kere. It is very unfortunate that since after the Biafra convention in Lati, Finland, November twenty, November twenty ninth to December third, twenty twenty fourth, Odumegu state has experienced a lot of setback as a result of Ngozi Orabufulani's betrayal. Ngozi Orabufulani is an indigent of Odumegu state. She started destroying the Biafra liberation from the grassroots, gradually making sure that Odumegu state does not enjoy any form of peace, unity and progress. She is a green snake under green grass, walking tirelessly with her lawyerist to destroy any manful efforts by our state. They will move anyone who speaks the truth from our state WhatsApp group. She sees acting of sensible questions by Biafrance as a threat to her evil agenda. Little do we know that Orabufulani does not believe in Biafra, in Biafra freedom. She colludes with the lethal terrorist state to keep Biafrance. But because we are here, she has failed and will continue to fail till she and her saboteur group disappears completely into oblivion like the defunct DOS. Today, the good people of Odumegu state have come to make their stand very clear that Odumegu state stands with Bridge for the real liberation of Biafra land. We therefore call on all well-meaning Odumegu state indigents to join hands together and support Bridge for the real liberation of Biafra proposed and declared to be called United States of Biafra. In conclusion, we recognize the Biafra defense forces, the commander in chief, Igwe Butuzo, and his garant men. We are extremely happy for having you or fighting with us for the Biafra, for the Biafra freedom. Long live Ohamadikeawan of Biafra. Massey Nandekano. Long live Obatobiawan of Biafra. Massey Simon Eba. Long live Biafra defense forces. Long live the forty United States of Biafra. I thank everyone who have endeavored to be in this town hall meeting today. May Chukwokike bless and keep you all. Ishe, ishe, ishe. De on, mushineke.
Thank you very much, Massey.
There were, there were. Minister Jare, please co-host, PK Chukwosive. Bring a lot of co-hosts.
Okay, thank you very much, Ma, S. He did a very, this is very powerful message. It shows that we are still one. We still do the battle. Now it's time for...
Masie, sir.
Masie, sir.
Yes. Masie, yes. Have you broken cola?
Have I?
Have you done breaking a cola nut?
It's, uh, um, you finished breaking it. Okay, I'm picking, I'm picking cola with fifty agenda on my side.
Thank you, thank you. So let's open the floor for those that wants to test the cola nut of Odumegu.
That's what I wanted to say.
Not in, uh, Oweri state, it's not the same cola nut in, uh, Olo state. And the one in Odumegu is not the same as the one in Etayana. So let's test the cola nut of Odumegu and see how it goes. We have experience, experience, over to you, sir.
Yes, and, you know, to go on, on this, you know, we have cola nuts. We have, um, angara, like some colored paper. And we have, of course, of which people we used to, you know, mix it.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, good afternoon, good morning, depend your time zone. Good morning, depending your time zone. I give you to my APM, I miss some informations. Other protocols observed. It's my great opportunity to be in the midst of Admegu. For the, a great work they are doing. It's a great day. They have displays that yes, they are capable to move the mountain. And they always said the journey of a man started by one step. And they have make a step by organizing this great, wonderful visit of APM. On behalf of a Bonyas. I am the admin of a Bonya. On behalf of a Bonya, we are taking the cola nut in the sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone, those who, you know, maybe because I wanted a daughter, you don't like cola, you know, have we have angara, we have opusse. You know, alligator pepper and everything, so you can choose even um even unqobi and, and, and go, you can take it as a, as a color. So let's keep raising hand and, and go. Raise hand and answer your father's name. Thank you.
Good numbers, son, it's all good number over to you.
Admegu Kweni. Admegu Kweni. Admegu Kweni, Admegu Kweni.
Ah, yeah.
Dala, 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 dala. Thank you. The, they made the speech and the prayer I grow for Alwa Waka. It's about one fee book even. Dala didn't know, never knew. Dala, nde, Admegu, I'm gonna number new food. Um, um, I will make a dozen of food, I'm a tobacco. Uh, it's not been the original, but in the original call, no, but just be a harmony, a barman. It is not because I'm a harmony, I'm a, I gave me a fruit. We are going to approve half out of our land. She's not a neighbor. From, uh huh, she came to destroy. And I, I thank you for Kabiama that term. Almost given that woman address of my family. When I wanted to do something, I contacted her, almost give her, and I thank you that I think you had that address. Because when I, when this thing happened, I began to question her, she blocked me. You know, I've used that opportunity to do her evil. Um, she's, she came to destroy, she's a full and woman. Alimata Babaka, the butterfly that called herself bird. You copy him. Uh huh. Every evil before her, she came to destroy our land. The land that I gave, that, that, that they born you, the land that bred you and raised you up. What you will give back to the land is to share the blood of the innocent people of the land to betray the land. She will never have peace. So also anybody who is backing her evil. Thank you, Admegu State, thank you, um, APM, and your entourage, thank you for coming to Admegu. Admegu is a very beautiful state where we have a very different tourist area. Thank you so much. Uh huh. I will on behalf of my family and the Udi County. I am taking cola nut with fifty thousand AJ. And right now we sending receipt to Honorable Minister for information, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, my brother, I got the number.
Under please.
My S, you have many hand trouble.
Yes, yes, yes. I have, I have to thank you before, before I go to next one. So Pastor Paul, over to you, let's do the missful. Pastor Paul, you cannot meet yourself. Yes, 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 we are hearing you, we are hearing you. Go on. Yeah, you, you meet yourself, you meet yourself again. Okay, now go on.
I want to thank God for what move will change for every step they have taken. It's noise. But I thank God that God has given them the victory to conquer the enemy. Uh, I want to, on behalf of Anoma State, I want to welcome our Atokonadu APM with five thousand. I still welcome to the stage. The people of Anoma, John Admegu, the sister, you are welcome. God bless you, sir. God bless you.
There were, there were.
There were, there were, there were.
Um.
I want to not, I want, I want that to find. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Angoleka, Angoleka nest, Angoleka, you cannot meet yourself.
Good evening, great Biafrans. You people, I welcome everybody. I welcome our APM for the great job that he's doing. I welcome all the brig for all their efforts. I welcome all Biafrans that are here to participate in our fundraising today. Um, Admegu State is a great state. And the people that donated money, I want to bring update from Admegu State for this event. So uh, we have Masi Chinadum Victor. He paid thirty thousand AJ. We have Odenaka eBay. Four thousand AJ. We have Masi Ikachukun fifty thousand J. Mada Angoleka, five thousand AJ. Masi Cipren, five thousand AJ. Masitukwe Meka. Hundred thousand AJ. Uh, hundred thousand AJ for welcoming our APM. And the fifty thousand AJ for picking up the cola nut. Masih Funa paid thirty thousand AJ and thirty thousand BLT. Pastor Linus paid five thousand AJ. Our honorable CRC Masimama Dabum paid two hundred AJ, two hundred thousand AJ. Masih Ayotukun paid one hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Masih Ezey paid fifty agenda on the website. So um, we have a what are people name? Masichukudjoke fifty thousand AJ for cola nut fifty Ma, Asikelvin fifty thousand AJ for not fifty, thirty, I mean thirty thousand AJ for cola nut and thirty thousand AJ for APM. So the total money that we realize for our this event for cola nut and welcoming our APM is nine hundred and nineteen thousand AJ. There won't. Are you, am I coming up here?
Yeah, no, I feel like.
Loud, loud, clear, there were, thank you very much, thank you very much. I, uh, uh, I.
Admegu Kweni. Hey, Admegu Kweni. Admegu Kweni. Ubeje, na ni ke. Ubeje, na ni ke. Ubeje, na ni ke. Ubeje, na ni ke. I ain't not changing. You have to go, I had a shaky shaky. Oh, that could be danger, oh god, they ma, they won't.
There were, there were.
Who does that have for bros?
There were. Wada Angoleka. There were.
Okay, uh, next, Amaka Allison. Over to you.
I come. Hello, I'm the one getting them. Uh, na na, I'm here.
There were.
Loud, loud, there were. For my, for my.
Yeah, because pledge can game. I want you on the fourteenth. Nobody face, they go on fifteenth, okay? I think no quarter, but I'm not going to go, but last part of the length. So I mean I'm a man, yeah, twenty pounds for the um, December state. Thank you.
Twenty pounds for the um, December state. Thank you. There were. Dalo, dalo. Mena, mena, no.
Yeah.
Uh. Yeah. It's a okay.
You have plenty of hands, all the hands, you have plenty of hands.
Okay, Chief Algoncy. I'm with yourself.
I greet all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Aviyama.
Sir, sir.
I want to welcome every one of us. Because there you are is in the central region, which I am the administrator. I supposed to be giving this chance before now. So I welcome all of us in central region, uh, uh, Biafran land. I want to thank, salute to APM and his co-entourage. I sell of you. God will serve God and bless you people in the name of Chuku Okike Aviyama. For the good job and good work that you are doing. We see everything and we know everything. Um. Without wasting much time, uh, I supposed to bless the cola. For the fact it had been blessed. I will take the cola with the, on behalf of our low states with a sum of ten thousand AJ. Thank you and God bless all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Aviyama. He said.
He said, he said. Dalo, dalo.
Dalo.
Dalo, Chief Algoncy, all the states.
Yeah, he would make a night, eh, 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 he was also. Don't be offended, you know, we all, we all learning. We all learning.
Thank you, thank you.
Next time, next time, next time we try to do it better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, only one of them, they know, they were.
Next, okay, next is Kiruka. I'll meet yourself, please.
Kiruka, I'll meet yourself, please.
Yeah, sorry. I'm a bit occupied. Okay. Please, I greet the house. Yeah. Hmm hmm. Uh, Chuku Kike, you thank you so much for bringing us together to we come to support Admegu State. Okay, I don't have much to say except to thank Chuku Kike Aviyama for everything so far, for our PM, for our leader. Okay, so I want to support today with um hundred agenda. Please put it down. I'll pay it and forward the receipt to Mr. Bunnyface, please. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Coco Akka, Coco Akka.
Admegu Kweni.
Hey.
Admegu Kweni.
Yeah.
Admegu Kwenu.
Yeah. Soni, Soni, play, play that small, that, that music you usually play.
Well, I want to add, I had the name one.
I know, I know, I know, I know. That is a thank you, thank you message, right? Appreciate your message. Thank you message, thank you. Oh, you want to, next one.
Yeah, continue, go to the next person while we.
Okay, okay, you Frankie. I'll meet yourself.
I can never want more. Yes, woman, no.
Oh.
APM, I'm a Admegu State to get on the Tora, you know, no, no.
Agatha South. Agatha North. Oko County, Ufuma County. Inkelehi County. Eku Sigo South. Eku Sigo North. Osumei County. Ochei County. Uli County. Ihiala County. Ebponesi County. Okbo County. Nawi County. The last but not the least, Okijia County. With that wasting time also, I want to just give a small explanation about Odumegu. What we like in Odumegu. But you know, Odumegu have some special food. In Odumegu state, we have some special food in Odumegu that we call Ofe Onubu and Ofe Aura. And also in Odumegu state, we have four market days and each town in Odumegu have different markets that have a K Oye Afo Mpo. And each of one of all these markets that each town has, there's a special food that we normally eat on that each market. Something like Abacha. Some, 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 some part of Biafra land call it Oban or yes. So each market have a special food they normally eat on each market day. And also we have a culture, we have different, if you come to Odumegu state, we have different, different mascots. And in this program, you are going to see one of the mascots, the big, one of the biggest mascots in Biafra land that come from Odumegu called Ajofia Nanewi. Each town in Odumegu have different mascots that, that was known of that town. And also Odumegu state is a tourist place and a commercial place. Without wasting time, brothers and sisters, I will stop here because if you are continue, we're not going to leave today. But let me stop here. I just measure but few. Thank you and God bless every one of us. Amen. He said, he said, he said, he said.
Yeah. He said, thank you, my Ebu secretary. For this short explanation about Odumegu. Have a lot. You know, if you, if you continue doing that and reading it, I think that everybody will stay here till, till banking bank come. So include the number, your hand is up. So unmute yourself.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Odumegu Kweni. Odumegu Kweni. Odumegu Kwenzoni.
Yeah.
Um, Darlo Rinna. Because twenty, twenty thousand AJ when you work. Honorable Minister for Information, yes, I've sent you a receipt of hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Please, um, I'm still spending from that money, okay? I've sent the receipt already. Twenty thousand AJ plus.
Wait, wait, wait. Look at the number. It say fifty thousand AJ.
Fifty thousand AJ for the first time and this twenty thousand, seventy thousand AJ now, okay? That's what I already spent.
AJ, 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 AJ. In equivalent to dollar, equivalent to dollar. AJ, AJ, AJ. Okay.
Money. Fifty thousand AJ, I will give you, don't worry. Today is coming.
Yes, you go, you go reach that side with time. Yes.
I'll give it. You see, I want to call it, I want to show something here, bring something out. When our, uh, who speak just now called the, the name of the counties in Odumegu state. Do you know that somebody who said that is from, from, from Ogah don't know her local government? Is that not a red flag that the Moron is not from that soil? And I want to know that Odumegu state in where my country where you have Odukubanka, you have airport and you have wonder river, two rivers that flow together. They don't, they don't accept each other. You know, is found in my country. And I just want to highlight that with this, please permit me, this is all of our.
Thank you very much. Good number.
Thank you.
For this explanation. Thank you.
Good number. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, yes, I'm going. Techno Pop five pro. You are next. Unmute yourself. Take the next person. Why are you wait for Techno Pop? Okay, uh, Steven, why Jesus?
Ah, Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
Odumegu Kwenzoni. Let me do it to time. Uh, I want to thank everybody that is here. The APM, the information, the administrator of Odumegu and the, the central uh, region administrator and the Aludo, which is my state. Uh, I just want to say that this is wonderful. But one of the issues is that if you know or wherever you find something good, invite your brother there. We, like what I always talk about is mobilization. Let people know the right channel. When we are talking of Odumegu state, that's how we will channel all these things. You will see it will be very easy to harness people. By the time you come, making sure that all the counties are represented. They have, uh, then you go to the, uh, hello? Hello?
Right. We are hearing you, we are hearing you.
Okay.
Go ahead. Majesty Stephen, Majesty Stephen, please, let's keep it short, short. We don't want to miss any of the hands because some people may be at work. They just want to hop in and then finish. So let's keep it short, short.
I'm taking it straight already. Now, when everything is arranged that way, you will see that we will get to the grassroots. Why I'm saying this is that the assistant that had a meeting, they called me today. And what they are saying is in disparity to what we are doing, but I have corrected that the way I can. But what I want to say is let us go out, reach out to people. If you bring one thousand, I bring one thousand, another person bring one thousand. If we are one million, it is a lot of money. So let us go that way. God bless you. I will support. I don't know if my sister Angoleka has announced it, but I have told her because I was having battery problem that I'm going to support Odumegu with the two thousand AJ. And let it just, that is what. God bless you. Let us walk and see Biafra actualize. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majesty Stephen, Majesty Jesus. Thank you. Your question. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Techno Pop, are you ready to eat in ground running?
Yeah, good evening. Odumegu state. Odumegu state. Odumegu state somehow, yeah. One man, one man, one man, they will, they will, they will. Uh, this is my secret. I don't know what happened to my phone. My name changed to Techno Pop five. I tried to change it, but it's not changing. Nevertheless, you are all welcome. You are all welcome. You are all welcome. My honorable ministers, you are all welcome. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming to grace this wonderful occasion. May Chuku Opecabiamma continue to bless each and every one of us. My honorable APM, you are looking good. You are looking great. Thank you all, the whole admin of Odumegu. I thank you for putting this program. It's wonderful. Honorable Minister for Information, I thank you. You are welcome. I would talk to you more, more time. I'm using three thousand AJ to welcome my eight year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank, thank you very much, my brother.
Uh, he said, how much? How much, please? How much?
Three thousand AJ, three thousand AJ.
Three, three thousand AJ. Okay, uh, Mbautwebu. Oh yeah. Keep, no. Unmute yourself.
Yes, uh, Chet, 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 Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
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 Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
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 Asena, Ezuko Kaeri, Atotuongiga. I had taught to my first time in Bia, Odumegu meeting. On the, on the July 20th today. That I was able to got the, I saw the information from our Ebu Prime, our Ebu Minister of Information. As that, but our prime minister is coming out soon. It was in my dream, it was in my dream to be meeting another story for another day. So when I got the information as I wake up this morning, I was, I was very happy. I probably come in and when I come in was when our brother was blessed and all the north. So I want to thank everyone. I want to thank our APM, welcome to Odumegu state. We are peace, loving people. We are wonderful. We are accommodating. And we are hardworking people. When you talk about Ebonbo, hustling. Hustling a lot. When we follow, never, never accept to be on the ground. We keep pushing and hustling. We are known for that spirit. So you all are welcome. I made the spirit of Opecabiamma, not to bless Odumegu state and so many other states, other forty states that is being assisted in the Biafra government. So in this, at this moment, I use first of all twenty AJ to agent twenty AJ when if you travel APM Oche, no, got an order today. Just say, uh, Kadostogari, East End, Rapa White, yeah, yeah. And there was a thirty AJ when they were all urge. I am going to send the receipt in a group via on Telegram. Because you see any come on them, when you many go buy, you may. The battle is not easy and we must know freedom is not something you buy from supermarkets. It is very expensive and costly. So we must not relent. Airborne, airborne, airborne. All hail Biafra. Thank you all, my brothers.
I have Biafra. Thank you very much, my brother.
Thank you very much.
And next, next on the line is Celestin iPhone. Unmute yourself.
Uh, good morning, everyone, and good evening and good afternoon, depending on your location. All protocol observed. I'm supporting Odumegu state with some of five thousand AJ. Those that we are busy at work, so I don't have much time. I'm supporting Odumegu with five thousand AJ. Thank you all. God bless and protect everyone and guide you all.
Thank you, my brother, for this very short. Oh. Listen, he made, oh, it's so good. Uh, uh, next one is Ome Pro. I'll mute yourself.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, our Ebu APM, Masweli, I guess you go, Pastor Ram, Ram, our Ebu Minister of Communication and everyone present, I greet you all with the name of our Ebu leader, Odumegu, Odukwu. Welcome everyone to our honorable state. First of all, I would like to thank our dear assistant, Wanda Ngaweka, for the wonderful job she has been doing ever since the issue we had from last year November. You know, Odumegu state used to be one of the best performing states when it comes to this Biafra issue, especially as constituted under PM. I can remember uh, the, one of the last visit in Abatobi did. Odumegu happened to be one of the least prior to his problem. And I remember how we worked tirelessly to make it a memorable one, you know? Uh, not less, uh, before I move on, I would like to remind the previous speaker who mentioned about few things that you could find in Odumegu state. He forgot to mention that Odumegu state also is a home to one of the biggest reserves in terms of natural gas between Ihiala and Uli boundary. Odumegu state holds the, one of the biggest natural, you can go do your research. When it comes to natural gas, you can find it in Odumegu state. And then about someone who mentioned about counties, uh, in terms of integrating everyone together. Remember the issue where we are coming from, the truth is what happened really caused a lot of problems. And it's a process where we have to gradually integrate many people because what I can tell you and I want you to, I'm stating it as a fact that so many people were monetized during this whole process. So not everyone is doing what they are doing with their own right conscience. Some of them have eaten money and they are in a situation whereby they know the truth, but they cannot go, they can, it's, it's too late for them to accept the truth now. So it's a process where we have to gradually rebuild their trust and then be able to integrate them into what we are doing now. Okay, so, um, uh, about how, you know, just a second, um. Okay, I don't want to go further. I would like to support today's program with some of twenty thousand naira. For the beginning, it's my first time getting to, you know, integrate into, I was one of those who are a bit confused in the initial stage. You know, but then as time goes on, like I usually, I used to communicate very well with Atadja Ram. Then goes on, I begin to, you know, um, try to look at things from different perspective and what has been going on because I'm someone who really wants to work with facts and not just gossips. So from incident that are going on, people by use those to defend their land instead of what is actually needed and the rest of it, it's obvious that we are not dealing with someone who is honest about her actions. I would also like to refer her as an individual. So from me, from here, welcome everyone to Odumegu state. We really hope to make it great again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless you, my brother.
My, please, uh, you say how much you said? How much, uh, Mazid, I just spoke, please. How much you said?
Twenty thousand.
He, he made the. Hold on, hold on, I'm asking him. How much you said? Nigeria. So anything associated with Nigeria, please. Uh, we know, we try the best we can to disassociate ourselves. Thank you. Alright, I.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Odumegu Kweni. Odumegu Kweni. Odumegu Kweni. Odumegu Kwenzoni. Odumegu Amaka.
Odumegu. Thank you, thank you. You're all welcome to Dumagu. When we observe a minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra, the time starts. May the souls of our heroes and heroines, baby, women and children, and everyone that have paid the price of Biafra liberation and freedom, rise in peace. While we continue to fight on to see that we get total liberation and restoration of our motherland. He said, he said, he said. Welcome to Odumegu state. And we are here to see what Odumegu people have for the Biafra government. Um, Honorable Moderator, over to you, sir. You have been my function. Unmute yourself, but we can't hear you. Majesty Stephen. Okay, sorry. I'm just talking to myself. Item number one, uh, opening prayer by Ayolochuku. Yes. Ayole. Yes, yes, yes. Ayole. Maybe having some difficulty. Adazion. Are you, you know, take over?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Ayolochuku, okay. Okay, okay, Ayotuchukwu, okay.
Talukano. Yeah.
No, no.
When is, it's no more opening prayer by Moa.
Yes, oh, what I said, you send that again.
Yes.
Uh, line you should question me and my now, and with the here, so you take is your.
Okay, I'm not aware, just, okay, we move. Now, to Toma, opening prayer. Bruh, Chikoku Kikabiama. Esane, be se arogo. Wakaka, Masia, Masia. Di ken di kere re. Omowakoko ono bosse Tata, obosonwa June. Obosin, obosin kizizino onwa June. Eba yewondo, nde ba yewondi, Odumegu State, di bokota. Wena namata, our acting prime minister. Nibana naino, Odumegu State. Ezonya wa echi neka, wena yobe. Kebe no nyanai. Kozie menka ege me today. Kometamporo. Wenyawa, wena yogo. Keno e, pre, ndisha e, our leader, Mazi Nandekano. Our Prime Minister, Simon Eba. Ezonya wa e, nyanefabe, nebefano na, wa hu me, mebo bi siye fika. I were, were, oh, omobiyafranile, omomoa e, anje anile. Wena hage naka. Wenyawa echi kewaha, wa hu me. Wena yokewa ge. Keno, nyanemo biyafra, ndine e, bende donation. Ndine menka hane, meni je, ngoro onwa. Wenyawa e, wena yogo, wene ki ne, no manisho, ina, no mo biyafra. Yinda ka ena, yo, si na, Chukuku, kap, bapurimi, yene. Ishe, 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 thank you.
Thank you very much, my brother. And, uh, item number two is the open remark by our Ebo State Admin, Majesiyoko Sissi.
No, please, you should co-host, Ossisioma, please.
Yeah, co-host him, he seems, yeah, he co-host him before, he's like, eh, you know, first out. Thank you, yeah, now he's back. As you see, Sisoma, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not hearing nothing. Majesiyoma, are you?
Oh, the state admin, state admin, where are you for your opening?
Yes, there is down there, but, uh, go host him again.
Wait, network, he came out again, wait, he will come back again. Yeah, his network is really bad. Yeah, let's go to the next item before he returns. Before he returns, the network will be fine. Uh, Moderator, check your program and go to the next item.
Okay, next item is presentation of color by Chukujoki, which is, uh, deputy admin Pakistan.
And then, when you make it. And I'm happy talking, and then, when you make it. Uh.
Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay. Because, I don't know about that, on behalf of Odumegu State. I don't know about our APM, acting prime minister, and his secretary, his cabinet. You got one, one minute, one minute, my time is busy. This is my, this is my camera. Uh, hey, on the. I want to turn my camera upside down, but I think, uh, it's not happening. Okay. Right. Okay, okay. Okay, enter one more, moderator. Ap, inafo badi. Apu nafo.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh. Hey, man, uh, who do you book? We were all.
Minister Jare, please, go with me on the other device.
Am I coming up to you?
Yeah, you can hear you.
Okay. To my amigo, Bwaje, kajia, naba ta, Ayodhya. On behalf of Admegu State. I am Georgia, Wena Alabata, our APM, acting prime minister, and his cabinet. And, uh, omona, I mean, they are from Buruburu. Uh, are you, uh, out here, ta? Yeah, I do. Reference to, we are poor project. If any, they, they don't know what you make. Chukuku, be care, Bwama, ekke, care onwa. Ona, new you, agadiana, people, na, na. Odi, di, di, thema, onya, wa, ni, ni, riya. Omoge, Admegu State, you are doing a lot of things, Keta. Wena, na bata, our APM, and his secretary, cabinet. And omona, eh, with Boba, Buruburu, omobiyafora. I am as soon as no, nde, we know what you do. Ekke, care onwa, ah, ah, to kajia, di no, bachin, Keta. Ah, ah, to, we have, ja, pokubi, we are the cheer, our ancestors, ja, president, Keta. Zha, yoke, Amara, yoke, Udo, yoke, Hunani, yoke, Agamnu. Ah, ah, to, kajia, di no, bachin, Keta. Odumegu, wena, ana bata, omona, eh. Wena, as soon as, ah, da, de, omobiyafranile, Buruburu, umwa. This para APM and his cabinet, umwa, nde, keda, kuta, no, bachin, Keta. I am, so, no, kyo, ni, di, ja, no, bachin, Keta. Nan, kuno, de, ju, we, eh, na, ya, kaya, ma. Ekke, care onwa, chun, bo, bo, na, de, de, I, me, ki ne, di, no, bachin, Keta. Si, da, care, di, du, da, ding, go, de. Eh, zaino, poku, de. Eh, zaino, yo, bo, bo, na, modern, ma, modern, zaino, poku, de, wene, ki ne, di, wena, as soon as, na. No, bachin, Keta, de, da, ta, ra, yo, ah, di. Ya, go, di, ra, yo, ah, di, no, bachin, Keta. Ah, di, ah, di, we, ta, ra, eh, Joma, we, ta, ra, you, do. Eh, Hunani, na, Gamnu, de, ju, omobiyafora, na, eh, na, oka, cha, cha, inja, no, the freedom, I, ne, de. Oh, no, di, Admegu State, can, no, no, bachin, Keta. Kamara, de, zha, eh, ok, no, bachin, Keta. Kamara, ika, de, ju, eh, me, he, ika, de, no, bachin, Keta, no, do, oh, we, eh, da, pa, no, do. Ekke, care onwa, eh, na, as soon as, di, ah, no, bachin, Keta. Waenaa, apaku, yo yo, yo yo, yo yo, yo yo, yo yo. Oh, yo yo, yo yo, yo yo. Umua da, eh, zme, zme, na, zme, yo yo. Na yo yo, yo yo, yo yo. In the fight of freedom, ba, yo, 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 yo. Waenaa, si, yo yo, yo, yo. Yo yo, 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 yo. Eteke ro, waenaa, eyo ke, de de. Waenaa, si, ta ge, kaya, yo, yo, no botin katafa. Oh, so, tu, yo, 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 yo. Oh, biyafra, si, no, no botin katafa. Odme gu, no, no botin katafa, yo, 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 yo. Yo, yo, si, yo, 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 yo. Na, yo, 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 ay, ge, yo, 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 yo. Oh, bu freedom, in tena, yo, 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 yo. Ay, na, yo, yo, no botin katafa, eh, ye, 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 ye. Ye, ye, yo, 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 yo. Oh, da, ni, pre, ya, yo, 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 yo. Akande, nde, eh, go, nde, si, yo, 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 yo. Eh, ye, 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 yo, 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 yo. Eh, da, si, yo, 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 yo. Na, eh, si, na, 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 yo, 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 yo. Na, 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 na. Eh, yo, 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 yo. Eh, ye, 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 yo, 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 yo. Eh, da, yo, 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 yo. Oh, yo, 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 yo. Oh, we, si, yo, 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 yo. Eh, to, yo, 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 yo. Oh, ke, ta, waenaa, yo, 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 yo. Eh, ya, po ta, oh, si, na, oh, genadeha, ya, 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 ya. Yo, 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 yo. Ni, ko, si, na, si, na, yo, 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 yo. Ni, kana, ha, yo. Eh, ye, 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 yo, 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 yo. Ya, bah, yo, yo, yo. Chokobemo biyafra nee, yo, 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 yo. Waenaa, apanpo, oh, desu, waedere biyafra, na, ma, kaide, si, yo, yo, yo. Me, ya, yo, 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 yo. Ah, ya, na, 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 oh, botin katafa, yo, yo. Me, ya, yo, 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 yo. Ah, na, yo, 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 yo. Na, nde, kabla, ya, ya, nde, in tena, bambo, our media, everybody, our APM, ay, ne, wo, tena, yo, yo, no botin katafa. Waenaa, si, ge, da, chokobemo, yo, yo, yo. Oh, da, yo, 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 yo. Yo, 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 yo. Ni, ya, gena, no, good news. Na, nde, kabla, ya, ya, nee, nee, da, yo, yo, yo. Amani ya, yo, yo, ha, ma. Ni, ka, ge, yu, ne, go, ay. Waenaa, yo, ta, ko, yo, yo, yo. Oh, gena, yo, 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 yo. Ay, yo, 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 yo. Wo, yo, 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 yo. Na, yo, 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 yo. Po ta, freedom, da, da, ya, na, po, ka, ya, ya. Nandenu, nandana. Isay, 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 isay. I hope, am, 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 am.
Isay. Very powerful, very, very powerful.
Oh, di, kana, waenaa.
Isay, isay.
Na, kana, yo, 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 yo.
Ah, amaka, amaka.
Oh, kana, yo. Oh, kana, yo. Di ko, ah, ta, mo, ma, ge, tu, tu, go, 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 go. Pakistan Admin. Uh, nine hundred and ninety states. I'm a G, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, eh, ya. Plus fifty, eh, gemma, waenaa, wa, ro, yo. Nine hundred and ninety states. Wo, yo, yo, go, hera, waenaa, si, nono. Oh, yo, yo, biyafra nee, na. Oh, kacha, ta, wa, APM, under his authority, his cabinet. And my, I am assuming, no, on behalf of Odme Gu State. They, 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 they.
They were, they were my dear brother.
Na, kana, yo, 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 yo.
Stand the need to exit the terrorist state called Nigeria. And to our Prime Minister, His Excellency, Mazze Simon Eba. I say thank you for your sacrifices and for building upon the, upon that foundation which our Supreme Leader, Mazze Nandikano, has laid down. The freedom of Biafra has been your ultimate treasure, Ohamadike, and Abato Biawan of Biafra. We pray to Chuku Kike for you to regain your respective freedoms and for the actual restoration of the sovereignty. And for the actual restoration of the Biafra sovereignty. He say, our CRC Shaman, Honorable Emma Madabum. Thank you for your efforts and commitment for the Biafra liberation. Through your hard office, to our APM, Honorable Oke Shukun Nkere. We are grateful because you have really become our bishop and evangelist as well. In the absence of our Supreme Leader Mazze Nandikano and our Prime Minister Mazze Simon Eba. You are building and pursuing the total freedom of Biafra people in the same steps and foundation laid down by our leader and Prime Minister. It is with great joy and honor that the good people of Odmebu State welcomes you all to this memorable town hall meeting. This is our first town hall meeting with APM, Honorable Nkere. It is very unfortunate that since after the Biafra Convention in Lati, Finland, November twenty, November twenty ninth to December third, twenty twenty fourth. Odmebu State has experienced a lot of setback as a result of Ngosi Arabo Fularani's betrayal. Ngosi Arabo Fularani is an indigent of Odmebu State. She started destroying the Biafra liberation from the grassroots, gradually making sure that Odmebu State does not enjoy any form of peace, unity and progress. She is a green snake on the green grass, walking tirelessly with her lawyerist to destroy any manful efforts by our state. They remove anyone who speaks the truth from our state WhatsApp group. She sees asking of sensible questions by Biafrans as a threat to her evil agenda. Little do we know that Arabo Fularani does not believe in Biafra re- in Biafra freedom. She colludes with this terror state to kill Biafrans. But because we are here, she has failed and will continue to fail till she and her sabo- sabota group disappears completely into oblivion like the, the defunct DOS. Today, the good people of Odmebu State have come to make their stand very clear that Odmebu State stands with Bridge. For the real liberation of Biafra land. We therefore call on all women in Odmebu State indigenes to join hands together and support Bridge for the real liberation of Biafra proposed and declared to be called United States of Biafra. In conclusion, we recognize the Biafra Defense Forces, the Commander in Chief, Iwebutuzo, and his guardsmen. We are extremely happy for having you all fighting with us for the Biafra re- for the Biafra freedom. Long live Ohamadike One of Biafra. Mazze Nandikano. Long live Abato Biawan of Biafra. Mazze Simon Eba. Long live Biafra Defense Forces. Long live the forty United States of Biafra. I thank everyone who have endeavored to be in this town hall meeting today. May Chuku Kike bless and keep you all. He say, he say, he say, nde one, motion again.
Thank you very much, my sir.
There were, there were. Minister, please, co-host, TK Chuku Sebe, in a lot of, co-host.
Okay, thank you very much, my sir. It indeed a very, this is a very powerful message. It shows that we are still one, we still do the balance. Now it's time for
Mazze Eze, Mazze Eze.
Yes.
Mazze Eze, have you broken cola?
Have I?
Have you done breaking a cola nut?
It's the, um, you finished breaking it. Okay, I'm picking, I'm picking cola with fifty Ajemma on my side.
Thank you, thank you. So let's open the floor for those that wants to test the cola nut of Odmebu.
That's what I wanted to say.
And the way we stayed is not the same cola nut in all those states. And the one in Odmebu is not the same as the one in Etayana. So let's test the cola nut of Odmebu and see how it goes. We have experience, experience. Over to you, sir.
Yes, and to go on, on this, you know, we have cola nut, we have angara, like some call it, and we have oposse, of which people we used to, you know, mix it.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, good afternoon, good morning, depending on time zone. I greet you, my APM, Amnisa Informations, other Protocalls observed. It's my great opportunity to be in the midst of Odmebu. For the great work they are doing. Today is a great day. They have displayed that, yes, they are capable to move the mountain. And they always said, the journey of a man started by one step. And they have made a step by organizing this great, wonderful list of APMs. On behalf of Ebonias, I am the admin of Ebonia. On behalf of Ebonia, we are taking the cola nut in the sum of five thousand Ajem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone, those who, you know, maybe because I wanted a dollar, you don't like cola, you know, have, they have angara, you have oposse. You know, alligator pepper and everything, so you can choose, even, even unqobi and, and ko, you can take it as a, as a cola. So let's keep raising hand and, and go. Raise hand and answer your father's name. Thank you.
Goodie number, Zanis, goodie number, over to you.
Odmebu Kweni, Odmebu Kweni, Odmebu Kweni, Odmebu Kweni.
Ah.
Yeah.
Odmebu.
Dala, 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 dala. Thank you. They, they have made the speech and the prayer. I grow for Alwa Waka. There is but one, a few book here, but, dala, neo, neo, dala, neo, Odmebu, I'm called the number of you. Um, um, I will, I will make a, those are, for the amount of Biafra. Uh, it's not indigenous, nobody indigenous in Kobo, nobody just, Bia, Amori Abah, manam, indigenous nobody because of Amori Abah, manam, I give me uproot. We are going to uproot her out of our land. She's not a neighbor of Biafra. Uh huh. She came to destroy. And I, I thank you for Kabiama that, I almost given that woman address of my family. When I wanted to do something, I contacted her, I almost give her, and I thank you for that. I think you had that address. Because when I, when this thing happened, I began to question her, she blocked me. You know, I used that opportunity to do her evil. Um, she's, she came to destroy, she's a full and woman. Alimata Bubaka, the butterfly that called herself bird, Yukopian. Uh huh. Every evil before her, she came to destroy our land. The land that I gave, that, 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 they born you, the land that bred you and raised you up, what we give back to the land is to share the blood of the innocent people of the land, to betray the land, she will never have peace. So also anybody who is backing her evil. Thank you, Odmebu State. Thank you, APM, and your entourage. Thank you for coming to Odmebu. Odmebu is a very beautiful state where we have a very different tourist area. Thank you so much. Uh huh. I will, on behalf of my family and the Uli County, I am taking cola nut with fifty thousand Ajem. And right now we're sending receipt to Honorable Minister for information. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, my brother. I call the number.
Mazze Eze, you have many hand trouble.
Yes, yes, yes. I have, I have to thank you before I go to the next one. So Pastor Paul, over to you. Let's do the missful. Pastor Paul, you cannot meet yourself. Yes, 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 we are hearing you, we are hearing you. Go on. You, you meet yourself, you meet yourself again. Okay, now, go on.
I want to thank God for every step they have taken. It's noise. But I thank God that God has given them the victory to conquer the enemy. Uh, I want to, on behalf of Anoma State, I want to welcome our Atakonadu APM with five thousand Ajem. And to our country, the people of Anoma, John of Odmebu, you are welcome. God bless you, sir. God bless you.
There were, there were.
There were, there were, there were.
Um.
Yeah, I want to know, I want, I want that for you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'm going to, I'm going to, nice, I'm going to, oh yeah, you cannot meet yourself.
Good evening, great Biafrans. You people, I welcome everybody. I welcome our APM for the great job that he's doing. I welcome all the brig for all their efforts. I welcome all Biafrans that are here to participate in our fundraising today. Um, Odmebu State is a great state. And the people that donated money, I want to bring update from Odmebu State for this event. So, uh, we have Mazze Chinadum Victor. He paid thirty thousand Ajem. We have Odenaka Ibe. Four thousand Ajem. We have Mazze Ikachukun, fifty thousand Ajem. Mada Angoleka, five thousand Ajem. Mazze Sipren, five thousand Ajem. Mazze Chukue Meka, hundred thousand Ajem. Uh, hundred, hundred thousand Ajem for welcoming our APM. And the fifty thousand Ajem for picking up the cola nut. Mazze Hefna paid thirty thousand Ajem and thirty thousand BLT. Pastor Linus paid five thousand Ajem. Um, Mazze, our honorable CRC, Mazze Emma Madabum, paid two hundred Ajem, two hundred thousand Ajem. Mazze Ayotuchu paid one hundred and fifty thousand Ajem. Mazze Eze paid fifty Ajemma on the website. So, um, we have a, so that people name. Mazze Chukudjoke, fifty thousand Ajem for cola nut, fifty thousand Ajem for welcoming our APM. Mazze Kevin, fifty thousand Ajem for cola nuts, fifty, thirty, I mean, thirty thousand Ajem for cola nut and thirty thousand Ajem for APM. So the total money that we realized for our this event for cola nut and welcoming our APM is nine hundred and nineteen thousand Ajem. Nde one. Are you, am I coming up?
Loud and clear, there were, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I, uh, uh, I.
Odmebu Kweni.
Hey.
Odmebu Kweni. Odmebu Kweni. Ubeje na nike. 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 Ubeje na nike.
Ubeje na nike.
I ain't no changing. You want to go, I had a shaky shaky. Oh, that could be danger, oh god, them are, nde one.
There were.
There were. Who did I have power for, broza?
There were. There were, madam, oleka.
There were. Okay, uh, next, Amaka Allison. Over to you.
Oh, come on, I got my little guy, man.
I come, hello, I'm the one, I'm the one. Oh, no, no, me here, me.
There were.
Loud and clear.
Off, off, ma.
Yeah, because pledge can game, I want you on the fourteenth, near Boniface, there go, on fifteenth, okay? I think no question, but I'm not, I'm not, so, I mean, I'm a man, yeah, twenty pounds for the um, December state. Thank you.
Dalo, 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 man, man, no.
My darling.
Uh. Yeah? Okay, next is, uh. Okay.
You have plenty of hands, all the hands, you have plenty of hands.
Okay, Chief Agonse. I'll meet yourself.
I greet all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama.
Sir, sir.
I want to welcome all of one of us. Because there you are is in the central region, which I am their administrator. I supposed to be giving this chance before now. So I welcome all of us in central region, uh, uh, Biafra land. I want to thank, salute to APM and his co-entourage. I tell all of you, God will safeguard and bless you people in the name of Chuku, of Kabiama. For the good job and good work that you are doing. We see everything and we know everything. Um, um. Without wasting much time, uh, I supposed to bless the cola. For the fact it has been blessed, I will take the cola with, on behalf of our low states, with a sum of ten thousand Ajem. Thank you and God bless all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama. He say.
He say, he say, dalo, dalo.
Dalo.
Dalo, Chief Agonse, all those states.